Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We are now entering the final session of the Global Town Hall 2025, titled Religions for Peace: Pushing Back Against the Rising Tide of Bigotry and Prejudice. For this session, we invite Reverend Rihaan Prasad, Minister at Kandala Presbyterian Church in Wellington. Reverend, you may have the floor.
Tienakoto, tienakoto, tienakoto katoa ko, Rihaan Tokingwa. Warm Pacific greetings to everybody out there. I'm not sure how many people there are, but I hear there's lots. We are, I'm, I'm, we're all at different time zones. I'm apparently, I'm around four o'clock in the morning. So I'll try not to, to stumble and mumble too much as I moderate our way through this discussion. But first of all, just a little bit about me. As the name suggests, I have a Fijian Indian ancestry, but also an indigenous Maori ancestry to New Zealand. I'm a Presbyterian minister, married with two awesome boys. I have been involved in the interfaith arena through my Presbyterian faith, probably for the last 10, 15 years, particularly with youth ministry. And one of the projects that brought me here to this space moderating was the 1,000 Abrahamic Circles project with which I went on a journey that sounds like a bad joke, like a rabbi and a mom and a minister walk into a bar. Well, we, we kind of walked into each other's lives for two weeks all around the world, depending where we lived and learned from each other. And one of the key things that happened just prior to that first journey was the mosque attack in Christchurch, New Zealand, on the 15th of March, 2019. And it was very interesting for me as a New Zealander to experience that in a country that we don't expect or, 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 you know, experience a lot of that stuff compared to places around the world. And it was very eye opening for us. And one of the things that we learnt, which has carried through to the Abrahamic Circles project, and then I think one of the key reasons we're talking about this session of peace, was what we called loosely "the love of neighbor". It was some amazing stories coming out of Christchurch of how people next door to the mosque were taking people in, setting up ongoing relationships of life, we're eating together. So becoming closer than they were ever before the attack. Now, there's a whole lot of things around that that we could talk about another time. But it's great to be in the presence of a panel of so many people here who bring their own stories of how they are working with moderating for peace all over the world in different contexts. I think this is a great environment and a chance to do some of that work that I think you call it what "cross the aisle work", where our governments probably don't do it as well as we do on the ground. And it's great to see community people like involved from the grassroots, sharing, talking, and being the change in our communities. And that's, that's one thing I appreciated about the 1,000 Abrahamic Circles project. And I look forward to moderating this, this discussion as we, we hear from speakers. We have some panel discussion afterwards. And hopefully, we all come a little bit closer, but also learn more about what's happening in all these different spaces on this topic of religious peace. So with that, I want to hand over to our first speaker. And I'm just going to turn the page on my notes here because it is very early in the morning. Rabbi Stephen, I think you're going to talk to us first.
Let me get my screens. Shalom aleichem, salam aleikum, peace be with you. Jewish tradition teaches me the following stance in the world: "B'tselam Elohim." At the end of the first chapter of Genesis, it says that we are called, "That God created the first human in God's image, in the divine image." It doesn't say the first human, that humans are created, that Jews are created in the divine image. It doesn't say men are created in the divine image. It doesn't say white people are created in the divine image. All humans are created in the divine image. So you can imagine what comes from that. The first century Rabbi Hillel was ordered to stand, to stand on one foot while teaching Judaism. And he said, "That which you would not want done to you, do not do to anyone else. The rest is commentary, go study." And lastly, the mitzvah commandment that shows up in the, in the Torah 36 times more than any other says that we are commanded to love and not to oppress the stranger, the immigrant, the outsider. Because you know the heart of the stranger, because you were strangers in Egypt. And every year at Passover, we retell the exodus story. And remember, we were slaves, not to reinforce a sense of being victims, but to deeply remind us that because of our historical experience, because we have been oppressed, we are not called to just circle the wagons and survive, but rather to look out for others who might be oppressed and to act. Because we know what it's like to be strangers in a strange land. We know what it's like to be oppressed. And we are called to act whenever needed on behalf of the other. So this idea later supports the concept of Tikun Olam, Repair of the World, which is a central tenet to Jews around the world today. There's many other examples I could give you that speak to this calling to be a holy people at Amkadosh. And we may talk about how some of those values also found in most other faith traditions are being violated today. But for this short introduction, I'm going to talk about one more foundational idea that has impacted my life. And that is the importance of relationships. The most important thing is relationships. We could have some great conversations and find agreement and difference, but if we don't really get to know each other as the Quran teaches, it won't matter all that much. I have, however, worked my whole life to develop real relationships with people different from me. And that means just a few of hundreds of examples I could give, that when my wife back in 1988 said she wanted to visit Gaza, I had a family there that I knew and we developed a relationship with them. And I ended up leading tours in Gaza three times after that. It means that, and, and, and when this last war started, I was able to contact that family and make sure everyone was okay. On October 7th, the first person that called me was a Muslim friend. On the Sabbath after October 27th, 2018, at the massacre of the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, 17 faith leaders came with me to the Parliament of World Religions in Toronto. And they came with me to serve synagogue services and stood in a line of protection and solidarity around the synagogue. When daughters of an Israeli Arab family needed their, to get out of the country for a while, they came to stay with us in Denver. When there was an attack on a Mormon church, I have people I could call. When I visited a family in this, this family in the Galilee in an Arab village during the Second Intifada, and I noticed that I felt safer in an Arab village than in Jerusalem, my friend Ibrahim explained to me that it's because no one's going to hurt me there. And lastly, I guess for now, I'll say that when my multi-faith leader group met on a retreat last June in a section on sanctuary, I realized this is my sanctuary. These people who I've had deep personal conversations with, broken bread with, and more. So my suggestion to all of us is that we don't create peace in a more compassionate world by just spouting nice religious ideas like the ones I started with. We can do it by creating and deepening real relationships with real people and especially people from outside our smaller bubbles. As Hillel said, "If I'm not for myself, who will be for me? And if I'm not, if I'm for myself alone, what am I? And if not now, when?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, the process of this is, oh yeah, I don't know, clapping. I don't know even if I can hear the clapping from all around the world, but I'm assuming it's there. We're going to pass over now to Shonika Rishi Das. I'm trying my best here with all the, with all the pronunciations. And, and after he speaks, we're going to have some responses, which I'll moderate then. But we'll, over to you now.
Yes, thank you very much, Rihaan. And, and thank you very much, Rabbi Stephen, for a good start. Your quotations, I think, are, are very important because it's good for me to hear them. I mean, I, I come from an Irish background. I chose to become a Hindu at a very early age. I joined an ashram, it was a Hare Krishna Ashram in Dublin. I shaved my head, I... Goodness gracious. I'll just keep talking because that's what Irish people do.
There was a time ago.
Yeah, so I joined, I went to Northern Ireland with two of my colleagues. We had shaven heads and saffron robes. We were crossing the border from South to North Ireland. There was a conflict in Northern Ireland at the time. It was political, it was economic, it was historic, it was religious. And we were stopped at nighttime by masked men with guns. These were paramilitaries. And we didn't know if they were Catholic or Protestant paramilitaries. And they asked us, looking into the car, "Who are you? Where are you coming from?" Now, we understood, okay, this is, we're coming from the South. They're going to assume that we're Southern Republicans. And we said, "Well, we're, we're Hare Krishnas." And we thought, "That's it, we got our way out. We're not Catholic or Protestant." And he looked in and he said, "Are you Catholic? Are you Catholic Hare Krishnas or Protestant Hare Krishnas?" It was just, "Oh no." And it was the level of religious ignorance, illiteracy. And I have found that in 40, 45 years of working in Northern Ireland and various places, in education in Oxford, the level of religious illiteracy in the world is astonishing. We, a lot of us don't even know very much about our own faith, what to speak of other faiths. And I think that's, it's ultimately dangerous. I, I see it in Hinduism as nationalistic Hinduism develops. The idea of nationalism and Hinduism is an oxymoron. These words really don't go together if you look at Hindu theology and philosophy. But it's been allowed to happen because of a lack, a lack of literacy in the country. There has been no education in India for 80 years about religion at any level. That was a decision made at independence. I think it was a terrible decision. But the result is that you can have this nationalistic Hinduism that goes unquestioned because people don't have an intellectual vocabulary to deal with it. I think it's a, it's a real problem in the world where bigotry is mutating not only into social and political forms, but also religious forms. And people are taking it seriously. So that's, that's, that's a problem. And I'd like to just propose a solution, not to that problem, but another solution. Investment, what drives the world is money, as they say. Money makes the world go around. Some, some guru gave us that mantra. But there's, there's something of a truth in it when it comes to politicians are definitely swayed by asset managers. The fact is that religion either owns directly or controls by influence, up to 36% of the markets, that's a huge influence. It owns directly more than 12% of the planet. It controls more than 54% of media outlets. It controls more than 56% of educational institutions. So if, if religions were able to work together to say, "Let's work to save the environment. Let's disinvest in fossil fuels, et cetera," whatever they want to say. And they can say it and invest their institutional funds and their property assets and tell the asset managers to do it like that. It will be done like that because asset managers are immoral, or immoral, not immoral, immoral. And I think that's something that people can actually do together. It'll take a while to get there, but it's eminently doable because as Rabbi Stephen was saying, we do all agree that we should treat the other person the way we would like to be treated ourselves. And, and finally, I would say that solutions about human dignity are very important. But when you come to Eastern traditions like Hinduism, Buddhism, Jainism, Sikhism, and even Taoism, it's more than human dignity, it's the dignity of all life. The idea of human dignity became very important during the time of the European Enlightenment, which was very important for Europe at that time. But it's a different time and we're talking globally. So if we want to speak globally intellectually and spiritually, we do have to consider that the idea of the dignity of all life, especially with our environmental issues, is very, very important to us. So there are just some, some things that help us reflect.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And so what, what we're doing now is we're jumping down to what's called the discussant response. And so we've got our four speakers. And then we've also got like five people particularly who have a focus on discussing or questioning what's going on with the speaking. So now's your chance. Is there anyone who has a question of the first two speakers or a topic to explore with them? Yes, Anura, go. Oh, sorry. Anura, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand up, but no.
No, no, that was a question?
Yeah.
No, no, that was a question.
Okay, okay, right. Anybody else anything that they'd like to talk a little bit about? Maybe I could kick us off, like, I think you mentioned the word nationalism there. And I can speak from, from, from a Christian standpoint, seeing that, that word being attached so blithely in places towards our faith and almost unquestionably, like, I think illiteracy and nationalism going together is a very, very bad mix in a lot of spaces, in fact, most spaces. Any other people want to maybe comment on that? Because we were saying even in New Zealand, which is quite a far away from the rest of the world in a lot of respects. And we have quite a different context. But this, this understanding of nationalism that has been, that we hear of within the Christian circles particularly, we find quite challenging and quite scary in a lot of ways in terms of how it's being an accumulation of power rather than an exploration of faith. So I'm not sure if anyone else wants to comment on some of that, maybe?
Imam Adam?
Go for it.
Yes, so nationalism is a, is a very interesting concept. And first things first, there is nothing wrong with a person who's a member of a particular community or ethnicity or religious background being proud of who they are. The issue comes when that is at the expense of other people and then is used as a tool to oppress, suppress, marginalize other groups of people. So there's nothing wrong in being proud of, of who you are, being proud of your identity, your family, your religion. These are all beautiful things which can be celebrated. But when it's at the expense of others, then it can become very, very dangerous. And it can become particularly dangerous when religion is mixed into that element. So we have this story of the creation of Adam, which the rabbi referred to before. So when Adam was created, it said that Satan was thoroughly jealous of Adam. And the reason he was jealous of Adam is because he considered himself to be superior to this new creation of God. And he has this famous statement in the Quran where he says, "I am better than him." He's actually talking to God, who created everything, who knows who is who anyway. But Satan says to God, "I am better than him." And unfortunately, what we find is a trap which is out there in society. For if we're not saying, "I am better than him," then we fall into the trap of saying, "We are better than them." And that's where the, the trouble comes. You know, I had a discussion recently with a senior, senior figure in the Church of England here in the UK. And we were talking about the rise of ethno-nationalism. Now, in the UK, what, what happens is it's a very different scene to the United States when it comes to religiosity and religious observance. So we've never really been a country where religiosity is on the increase. And, sorry, religiosity is on the declining and atheism is on the increase. That's how we find, very different to the United States. But there's a saying there, "When, when America sneezes, England or Britain catches the cold." And what we're starting to see now is some of these far-right ethno-nationalistic movements now starting to carry the crucifix at their rallies and come out with religious slogans. And so part of our discussion was, you know, how, how, how are the Christian community now in the United Kingdom going to be dealing with this challenge and making sure that their religion is not hijacked in a similar way to what we've seen the Islamic faith hijacked by terrorist groups like ISIS, Al Qaeda, et cetera, et cetera. So that's just a contribution from my side.
Well, thank you. And so what we're going, oh, we've got another question there. So we'll take, we'll take one more question and then we'll move on to the next set of two speakers. So is that Cecil? Sorry, yep, yep, sorry, go.
You muted.
Might just need to unmute your microphone, there you go.
My, my question really is, in the last few years, most of the focus in interfaith has been on the situation in Palestine, Gaza. And the question is for the rabbi, who, who actually gave us quite the beautiful teachings of Judaism and of the other Abrahamic religions. But if you look at the scriptures, particularly the Bible, should we admit that some of the verses or some of the sections in it are actually either promoting or condoning war, colonialism, genocide? I'm speaking as a South African, where the Bible in particular was used, where we also had people who used the same tropes of the chosen people. In our case, the Afrikaner population. And we use that same trope from the Bible of chosenness. And also in terms of the land, God has given them the land. So when we see these kinds of things, and this goes for all religions, but I'm using this in particular, this example because it's so crucial for our time, is, is this something we should look at as religious people when our scriptures speak to certain things very clearly? But those things are unacceptable in a modern civilized world.
Right, so I think that was for the rabbi, was it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our scriptures are really harmful.
I'll try to speak briefly to that. I think we, all of our faith leaders have a responsibility to speak strongly against the small minority of religious, often messianic fanatics among us who are, who are hijacking our faith and doing horrible things in the world. Imam Adam just spoke about, you know, several of the Islamic groups that have, you know, defamed the name of Islam. We need, we need to be able to do that. So in terms of Israel-Gaza, there's, it's mostly a political thing, not a religious thing. There is a small group of religious fanatics, criminals in the Israeli government right now that are, that are using some of their religious warped interpretations of Torah to justify what they're doing. But I really, I don't hear much in terms of Judaism as a religion being used to justify what's going on. It's a political thing. It's definitely a intergenerational trauma issue that's warped a lot of things. But no, I don't think, I really, I can think of lots of protests. I've participated in protests. None of them have been about, you know, the Torah says we should take over Gaza or that it's okay to, to kill people. No, I don't think that's part of it.
All right, so actually, before we, no, we'll hold that thought. We'll come back to more questions like, because people may have some more questions around that area. And it may be a one we talk about towards the end. But if we go now to Nazar, if you would like to share with us, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you for having me. I want to begin not with optimism, but with honesty because that's what young people that I work with keep asking, doubtful of peace building and interfaith relations. So in my work across Singapore with young people, Singapore region around the world, I hear a deep sense of fatigue, even disillusionment. They usually tell me that, you know, we all believe in coexistence, we believe in peace. But the words we hear in interfaith dialogues or, or even events such as this do not match what we see on our screens. And even in 2025, we cannot unsee the death and destruction happening to people and many of it because of identities, faith and identities. And you know, every day they see individuals being attacked simply for who they are. Of course, this is a phenomenon that's not new to any generation. But this generation has asked why this has not ended. You know, Muslim communities carry a burden. I know every time an attack happens, you can see Muslims around the world praying and hoping that it's not a Muslim, you know? The pressure to, to wonder if we need to apologize for, for X, we don't even think it's right or we did not commit. And the fear of just being, you know, blamed collectively. And Jewish friends, you know, repeatedly saying again and again that antisemitism has not declined or ended. It's mutating from campus to digital space to global politics. And Christians, Hindus and Druze and other minorities telling that nobody talks about them. Nobody cares about them, they're barely in hate lines anytime. So young people look at all this and they question the idea of faith. If every religion does tell us to leave as good men and women, show compassion, then why does it really seem like followers of God seem to find hostility in them much faster than they find peace? And why does it seem like religions do enable the conditions that create conducive environments and hostility? These are not cynical or criticism question. They're really conscious, they're really questions of conscience that is really faltering. And you know, they, they reveal an enormous moral dissonance, you know, between what scriptures preach and what the world is witnessing today. And I want to admit something gently on behalf of many of us who do this work. In the recent years, interfaith facilitators, peace educators, and community bridge builders have started to feel increasingly lonely, especially in the past two years. We are very tired. We are absorbing the grief of, grief of those whose pain has been normalized. We are carrying communities who feel unseen. We, we are tired of holding communal and political tensions that we really have no agency to solve. And in many cases, it's a profit for both politics and media to continue such conflicts. There are days where we feel like everything is stacked up against us. Media narratives, political rhetorics, politicians who go on to, to survive from these divisions. And sometimes even elements within our own faith communities create deep suspicion. So some days we are asking people to believe in possibilities that even we as peace builders struggle to see. But yet, we continue because some of us need to try to find and hold a center. So while everyone feels polarized. Some of us may protect small fragile spaces. I try to be the only Muslim girl in the room if I can. And, and, and many times there are people who come on days to support me and some days it just feels lonely. But even with all this, I've not lost hope. And really, today I'm only here because I do hope that today adds some answers to this fragile and faltering hope that all of us are holding.
Thank you. Yeah, and it, you know, I think it is good to highlight some of the stark contexts of where we live in this today's world. And let's follow on with Jessica now, if that's possible. Um, and let's follow on, uh, with Jessica now, if that's possible.
Yes. Hello, everyone. And thank you, Nazar. I kind of, I relate to what you've said and definitely some of the students that I work with. I've heard that as well. Um, I work at the London School of Economics Faith Centre and we deliver student programs and campus relations work. Um, for students. LSE is a very, um, international university. So we have students from all over the world that come to join us. Um, and we try to bring together those experiences and especially the experiences of students of faith. Um, kind of onto the center of life at campus. Um, I want to talk a bit about our Beacon Faith and Leadership Programme as maybe a source of hope. Um, we want to engage and, um, upskill students so that they become leaders like the leaders that are here today. That are ready to engage with religious actors, um, foster dialogue and build coalitions. Um, and I think religious literacy is really key to that. So that's, um, the key kind of goal of our programme. And we, uh, combine religious literacy education with a process of character development. That enables students to better understand the faith of others, but also how their faith might, um, impact their leadership beyond LSE. Um, and how they will work across cultures, which I think is becoming increasingly a harder thing to do. Um, we do this through dialogue with faith leaders, scriptural reasoning. Um, and also thinking about topics such as religion and climate change and conflict transformation. So, um, bring in kind of the religious perspective in line with, um, contemporary issues. I wanted to share a couple of, um, challenges as well that we're facing. Um, and I was interested to hear from Rabbi Stephen about your experiences of, um, working across cultures and across like interfaith work. Um, and that was really inspiring. I think unfortunately, some of our students aren't hearing those stories. So, um, it is actually a challenge to get students into the room and onto our programmes often. Um, this could be because they want to build solidarity and community within their own faith groups. And I think especially with the rise of antisemitism and Islamophobia on campus, that's completely understandable. Um, but I think we all know that interfaith is really a space where we can go beyond. Um, that really kind of address antisemitism and Islamophobia. Um, and they are kind of really transformative spaces, but many students sort of don't feel that these dialogue spaces will be safe. Or, um, yeah, feeling kind of anxious to engage in that sort of work. Um, some have also shared that they're kind of scared of being cancelled or doxed of saying the wrong thing. So often entering this dialogue space like is a really brave thing to do. And to trust that you can have complicated, um, conversations and you can kind of struggle through, um, scenarios and disagreements in a kind of supportive way. So there's lots of kind of fear of what's been said in a space being leaked out and then impacting their kind of social groups. Um, and also some activist groups have just on principle not wanting to engage with someone that is, um, of the opposing view of them. So they've walked out on interfaith dialogue. And especially peace dialogue, um, sessions we've had on Israel and Palestine, which is something that I've not experienced before. Um, so finally, I just want to talk a bit about sort of, there was a question we had about how can we help transform these challenges? And I think, um, especially within the UK, um, Imam Adam, it's really like, yeah, really amazing to hear about your work. Um, and I know that there's lots of amazing interfaith work happening. But I think a few sort of faith leaders and, um, organisations often are focusing on supporting and building kind of solidarity amongst their groups, but not reaching out across differences. And I think more examples of this and kind of, um, encouraging young people to get involved in this work is something that is very much needed at the moment. Um, so yeah, more public kind of solidarity movements would be really wonderful.
Thank you very much. Um, and I think we've set the stage there for the next part of our session, which is, uh, some questions. And, uh, Imam Ebra has one to start off. And Imam, I, uh, can I suggest you offer your question? Uh, but also make any comments within that three minutes that you have over the, over the subject matter that you've already heard. So over to you now.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Ryan, Reverend Ryan. Uh, I heard the, what spoken by the speaker and the discussions. Uh, we are religious leader, we are religious leader, build bridges, uh, between among the, uh, the community. And also meditate the clan complex and partner with the government and the civil society to promote, you know, promote peace education. And prevent violent extremism. This is a practical expression of faith. Religion is action, not just in prayer. You know, uh, in the Quran, uh, the Muslim teaches in the Quran that, uh, Almighty God, oh God created us into nations and tribe. So that you can know, or you can, you can know me, it's, uh, it's other. Uh, this, uh, divine message remind us that diversity is a blessing, not a burden. Truth is not measured by how loudly we proclaim our belief, but how deeply we practice mercy. Mercy, justice and respect for, you know, human dignity. So the important is to how to practice the respect, understanding among the humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and we also now have some questions. I think Sarah, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thanks so much. And thanks to all the speakers for your, uh, very inspiring input. Um, everything resonated with me, especially what Nazar was talking about, this fatigue in interfaith dialogue. And I think we have to, um, be able to acknowledge that interfaith dialogue is not a new phenomenon. It's been around for a very long time. And yet despite these efforts going back decades, polarization is increasing and trust is breaking down. So there's something that is not quite right in these efforts. And I'm sure that everyone here has experienced or has witnessed an increasing decline in trust in at least the Abrahamic dialogues since October the 7th. Um, I, I would like to make that more of a statement. I can't, uh, offer in a very quick time, a solution there. But I will offer some questions to our speakers. The first is that interfaith dialogue circles can be echo chambers where like-minded people who share the same values do meet and do like each other and, and form strong friendships. But how do we reach out to those who are causing the polarization and driving it? I, I wonder if you have experience there or if your projects do, uh, do aim to reach out to either those who are not religious or, um, those whose opinions are difficult. And my, my second question is a little bit related to that. I mean, we're seeing the decline in democratic spaces and in the capacity to sit with difference. I think Jessica was talking about that. So, I mean, without the capacity to sit with difference, our democracies are in trouble. But of course, interfaith dialogue is also in trouble. So I'd be keen to hear from the speakers about their experiences here because I, I really see that interfaith dialogue is not necessarily about agreeing. It's about sitting with each other on the basis of things like shared humanity, uh, human dignity, um, care of life, things like this. And my final question is actually to our moderator. You mentioned right at the beginning that our governments don't do it as well as we do. Um, and yet, um, interfaith dialogue and, I mean, the search for peaceful coexistence needs to involve our policymakers and governments. So, and I personally work a lot with policymakers in this space. And we're looking at how you can reach out to religious communities to involve them in conversations, not wanting to mix the powers, but, but having a general conversation. So I don't know if our moderator wants to share, um, anything about all the speakers, how do we reach policymakers? Cause they are, they are running our societies. Thanks so much.
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm happy to give that question a stab in terms of, of what happened here in New Zealand. Uh, but before we do that, maybe the speakers want to comment on those first two questions. Anyone want to have a go at those?
Yeah, uh, maybe I'll take the one about, you know, moving out of echo chambers, cause that was one of the core things. Um, so really within, um, okay, there's two really groups that I would say, I think within the Abrahamic group I have um, kind of really started to focus on, um, you know, strong Christian Zionists or, you know, um, Jewish Zionists, uh, very right main people, as well as not to say that I've also tried to understand the very left secular groups. Now, um, I'll tell you two challenges that I generally have with the orthodox conservative groups, uh, depending on, you know, which religion. There is a limitation I have sometimes as a woman. Uh, there's only so much I feel I can access. I, it's hard to explain. It really depends on the context. I do think there is, um, within a certain leadership of dialogues or communities. There is a limitation that I feel that I face as a woman or a young person. That's one. Second is, I think, um, so far a lot of my efforts have been just to listen, to understand the language, that temperature and the tone. Um, I don't think I've developed a lot of confidence in talking because I've not figured out what am I supposed to say to them? Am I supposed to try and change their entire psyche? That's, that's, that really cannot be the objective, right? So really to understand what is, what is, what drives the entire worldview, right? Um, and, and I think what I, I've noticed at least in the past four, five years is I've identified situations where I know people can't come together, topics that they absolutely cannot come to. Now then I have a list of topics. I know that we can bring them together, but then what's the purpose? Are we supposed to sit down and say, yes, let's all be peace? So I think the question is whether there can be a little bit more technicality and science to it. Um, maybe more hate scan to be, trust me, I've been doing this a bit alone and I don't think I found. Uh, but I would say it helps, it helps because now I know when I engage with certain communities, um, how to talk to them and how to understand the sentiments. Now being the only, only person of a certain identity, the only Muslim girl in the room helps. Uh, because I think in those, in those groups, because now I, I've created myself as a safe person who's willing to listen to them. I'm able to convey some of my opinions. Now the price I pay for this is being attacked by people as endorsing this group of people whose views may not be accepted. Now imagine being with a group of, let's say, Christian Zionists or anyone who have very strong views that are what, uh, the other groups may oppose. Now the price I pay is the criticism and the attacks for being in that room. And I think on many days I do wake up to not wanting to be there. So this has been really my honest struggle with no solutions, nothing. But I think what I found, if there's more people who are willing to be patient, be tolerant, sit in the rooms just to understand people without being worried about what moral judgments, I think more can be added to the table and we can move beyond these echo chambers.
Thank you for that. Yeah. And, uh, is it Stephen, you have a response as well?
Sure. By the way, I just really appreciate what everybody's saying. I'm learning a lot and, um, it's very special. Three little, three small things. One is, um, just on a practical level that I can share answering some of these questions is, um, there's an organisation I'm very much involved with called Standing Together. It's an Israeli Palestinian organisation of, uh, Israeli Jews and Palestinian citizens of Israel, um, who are working together for coexistence. And they say, you know, when this stupid war is over, no one's going anywhere. We're also going to be here. And we've got to figure out how to live together. And we know that that's not going to change with the current leadership in, of, in political power. So we have to gain that power. So they've created a long-term strategy about how to gain that power. And there's a Palestinian woman who's gotten on city council now in Haifa. There's a, a Jewish man who's gotten on city council in Tel Aviv. And they're, you know, it's not a short-term thing. It's got to be a long-term thing, um, how to get there. Um, I have had some really fabulous experiences with, um, standing together, friends of standing together here in Colorado. Going to demonstrations in, uh, like at the Capitol, uh, you know, anti-American government demonstrations. Um, where there's all sorts of groups, you know, calling out for their cause. And we just have a table about standing together and I expect people to come up and start yelling at us and it doesn't happen. People come up and they go, Jews and Palestinians can talk to each other? How interesting. And they, they ask questions for hours. And lastly, there's a group, um, I'm going to be with in a workshop in Berkeley next week. Um, of Israeli settlers of the West Bank, believe it or not, and Palestinians who have created an organisation called Roots or Shor Ashim. And they are committed to living together in mutual respect. Um, and there was actually a presentation they're going to be giving Sunday night here that will be on, available online if, if you want me to send you the link.
Yes, please, Shalaka. It's unmute, please.
Unmute myself, yeah. Sarah, you had a, you had a lot of very good questions and at my age, I've forgotten them all already. But, but, uh, I, um, I, I really, uh, when peace was supposed to come to Northern Ireland and the negotiations started. It started because a Protestant vicar and a Catholic priest got together and said, let's start talking. Let's get the people in the room, the people with the guns. It was illegal to talk to them. So we were invited to a meeting at eleven thirty-five in the morning. We had to go around the back door of a house. The front windows were, the curtains were drawn. We walked in and, and we saw people who are well-known to be leaders of the paramilitary groups. And they were talking about how the police force has to be fifty percent Catholic and fifty percent Protestant. And we looked at them and said, what percentage Hindu, Muslim, Jew? And the fact is, unless we're at the table in those discussions, we're not going to be able to affect executive decision-making. And it's, it, we, we have to, and as Rabbi Stephen says, it's a long-term project. We have to get out of the echo chamber, um, because we're all reading from the same song sheet in the choir in our little groups. But it's very, very important for us to, to get into the mainstream of society and to get at the, uh, the tables of the UN, of, of governments, of, uh, decision-making bodies. Because our idea of secularism that has developed in Europe, again in the Enlightenment, which again was a very important historic event. But our idea of secularism has come to exclude religion and spirituality. And the actual fact is that we, it, uh, that Pew charitable trust count would have wonderful long-term project. They say that eighty-four percent of the population still believe in the idea of God and have some, some idea of God. Um, it, it's important that the, that passion, that creativity, that, that dedication is represented at these tables. And that the leaders of the world don't pretend that they're not influenced by their background, their culture. Uh, or if they say that they are influenced, that they have to take other influences into account. Unless that's stated politically, that this is how we now view secularism. It's holistic. It includes religion, doesn't exclude it. Here's how we include it. I think we need to have another conversation. The idea of the Human Rights Charter, which is the thing that possibly defined the UN, became the most useful thing of the UN, was led by religious people and the UN itself resisted it. Yet it became the most defining part of it. I think it's time for religious people now to, to redefine secularism. To mean that religion is part of the discussion and not a part of the discussion that can be just rolled out whenever you want and rolled back whenever you don't want it. It's part of the societies in which we live. That's just, just a thought.
Thank you for that. Uh, and also, uh, I see Sue Yen's got her hand up. So, uh, I'll pass the, the floor to you as well.
Thank you. I was a real privilege to be part of this conversation. I'm also learning a lot. Um, I work in the field of far-right extremism and ethno-nationalism, um, particularly rooted in religious ideology. Um, in the digital realm, uh, and looking at how, um, digital harms of vulnerable communities are impacted because of that. I think part of the conversation that we've not had so far is the fact that the digital world is as real as the physical world to us now. And, you know, what happens in the digital realm has a spillover effect as well. Um, physically, we've seen a lot of the hate and bigotry and prejudice that, a lot that's been discussed, uh, in, in today's conversation. That also takes place, um, online, on social media, on WhatsApp channels, um, uh, on forums. That then has a spillover effect that can be very violent, can be very discriminatory and very marginalising, uh, uh, as well. And, and I think part of the challenge is that you, you have now new actors, uh, uh, that manipulates and also holds and governs the way, um, our communication channels. And therefore also they, how they shape the, our, our reality, uh, uh, in the digital world. So I really echo what Nazar and Jessica were saying about how young people today feel very fatigued with the moral dissonance. And I believe a lot of this fatigue and moral dissonance, uh, it takes place because a lot of our reality is consumed through the digital space. And a lot of this dissonance is happening at an unprecedented scale. Uh, never before in any generation where you would see, um, destruction and prejudice and hate and crime and war in between cat memes and pranks and pictures of left ones, all at a very, uh, quick pace. Um, social media platforms also, uh, they reward emotional triggers rather than nuanced reflection. Uh, it strips away a lot of the ability to have that kind of dialogue that tends to be necessary and needed to build interfaith understanding and interfaith resilience. So I guess if, if I can boil it down to one question, uh, to the panel and speakers today would be, where do you think the role of religious institutions are? Not just in terms of building religious literacy, but also, uh, you know, extending that to the type of digital literacy uh, that's really needed, uh, in today's sort of generation in how we interact with each other. Um, noting very well that, um, far-right extremist groups, uh, have mastered the art and the ecosystem of this space, but very rarely do we see religious institutions or influencers and leaders uh, have a foothold in this space. So I'll be, uh, curious to, to hear, uh, your reflections on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Uh, so we've got a lot of topics or threads we could pull at now. So, um, for those that want to respond, because I'm really aware we've got probably seventeen minutes left. And it may be good for us to actually tease those out now. So if you're a discussant who hasn't said something, now's your time. But if you also have a question to pull on one of those threads, now is also a good time for that. I haven't forgotten the question, uh, about the government thing and I'll come to that maybe in my closing. I'll give other people time to, to ask their questions now. If there are any. Oh, yep, Nazat.
I just wanna pick on what, um, um, Sue Yen said about, you know, what is the role of religious? And I, it's more of a question also. Uh, many times in a lot of more personal, very intimate conversations, I do get stuck in answering questions on what do we do about religious teaching that very clearly, um, you know, promote exclusion? Um, and have, and verses that clearly do speak in a way where, um, the other religions take it as a symbolic violence or even, you know, um, projecting harm on them. Um, I, I've seen some explanations that skirt around it, you know, talking about context and stuff. I know as, as a Muslim, I find it very difficult to explain some of the verses on Jews and Christians to Jewish friends. And you see, these, this is where the interfaith dialogue comes to an end. And, uh, and also I think these are also the verses that are being, uh, weaponized by extremists, uh, et cetera. So I think even I'm questioning, what can religious leaders do these days? Um, are, are we afraid to look at whether these religious verses need to be interpreted in an inclusive manner or, or, or should we sort of sit down and really think at, um, you know, how these verses are? I, I don't think we've had that kind of honest, deep engagement with our scriptures. Because otherwise we are always going to keep that, 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 if I may say, this, that ticking bomb under the carpet and then sit on top of it and, you know, pretend to talk about let's all being together. I do think that's a big problem. Um, it just affected me and I, uh, that'd be good, something to look at.
Would anyone like to reply to that? Yes, go for it. That's good. Yep. Jessica.
Thank you. Um, not just that point, but also to, um, Ordik's point about, um, social media as well and sort of the impact of that. I just want to share sort of, um, after October seventh, from the war in Gaza, students on campus were like incredibly upset. And for me, I couldn't always quite relate to why that was. And it was because of what they were consuming on, um, social media and, um, I just, yeah, I want to say, I think that's a really important point, especially for religious leaders that maybe aren't online so much. And so actually not having the empathy with young people, um, can be really challenging. Um, and not quite understanding how their sort of, um, online experiences impacting, um, their sort of day-to-day life. Uh, but I feel that now sort of two years on, students have kind of, are starting to kind of disengage maybe so much with that online and thinking about how, um, their degrees and what they're kind of wanting to achieve through their kind of academic life and their future careers. Like the focus on that and what they can do beyond uni, um, is something that, yeah, has potentially been a change. And I do think that it's been mainly religious students that have had that religious teaching who, and teachers that have told them like, you need to focus on your academic study, get in a good degree to go into a good career and then you can make an impact in your, um, adult life beyond campus. And so, um, yeah, I just wanted to respond to that point on times of like, kind of what religious leaders can teach young people in terms, yeah, of their impact in this world. Um, and thinking about kind of the relationships that they have and the kind of mentors that they have, which maybe some non-religious students don't necessarily have that. Um, and also just back to the point, um, from Sarah about kind of, um, policymakers, which I think is a really interesting one. Um, and at LSE, like we obviously are educating the future policymakers and politicians. Um, and there has been a kind of interesting paradox where it's been hard to engage some students in our programs and some students on principle haven't engaged in our programs. But actually there has been an increase of students studying like public policy and public administration. Um, polit- political science like that, and especially among, um, secular students, there have been an increased interest in our program. So I don't think all is lost and that there is kind of, yeah, um, those that are seeing the value of this work.
Thank you for that. And, uh, back to Stephen there, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm learning a bunch. I don't have the experience in the digital world or the student world as much as you're, you guys are talking about. Um, but I'm really struck that two things, on October seventh, the reason we know a lot about the horrors that happened that day was because of the, the, the videos that Hamas people were putting up about what they were doing. So it's, it's like, it's amazing to me that, that, you know, they were video recording their murders and their rapes and putting it up online for, for the world to see. Um, and then what, what really also, you know, it's like, how do we counters? How do you help people understand? I don't know. I think we've got a lot of work to do with that. Um, but what also really strikes me is that most of the world has ignored those videos since October seventh. And, um, so not only do we, uh, are awful things and, and things that are not true being put up online. Um, but that sometimes the most horrific stuff is put online and it gets ignored because of antisemitism or other prejudices. I'm sure the same thing has happened in the Muslim world.
Um, we're going to go to Imam Ibra very shortly, but I just want to make one little comment and a question to you, Stephen. Uh, but also in response to whatever Anna says, uh, from, 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 I suppose, a mainline Christian denomination in New Zealand, but knowing a little bit about Australia, knowing a little bit about America and England. Uh, I think on a whole, the, the, the Christian understanding of discipleship and teaching particularly younger people in our mainline churches over the last fifty to sixty years has really dropped off. Um, there, there, there's probably, uh, specific departments and specific organizations like the ones I'm hearing today that, that are more focused on young people that get it, not understand the spaces they're in, understand the pressures they're under. And, but your local parish minister, who may be in their sixties, uh, and, and a lot of our ministers are older in a lot of our denominations now. This is not a space they're equipped to be in and, and, and they, they get stuck. I suggest and maybe a very basic concept of discipleship or teaching, um, that doesn't really lift the bar on the critical thinking needs of young people. And, and then those critical thinking needs then come smack face to face with exactly those videos we see online and what do we do with that? And then, uh, different countries and different nations will have, and different religions in those spaces will have different ways in which they engage with young people. But I think the engagement with young people of faiths is probably the biggest priority in the, in the, in the faith, um, exploration space right now. I mean, I believe that's true. Uh, and the question I had just to tease that out a little bit, because earlier Stephen, you said that you hadn't heard a lot about the, the, the war in Gaza being something that was religious. It was more political, whereas we over, well, I, I, I speak for what we've heard in New Zealand is that there seems to be much more public opinion that this is a religious war, that there's, that there's, um, there's this ability to, to want to have the Jewish homeland, uh, geographically taken. Um, and so I was just wondering whether you would comment on that because there's a different context outside of America for New Zealand anyway that I, that I see.
Honestly, I think it's a lot easier for the world to, to, to understand this very complicated situation by labeling it as a religious conflict. Um, it's not, it's just not. It's, it's, it's two peoples, you know, the, you know, it, the Jewish people came back to their ancestral homeland with a tremendous need for safety and survival and self-determination. And the problem is they, they landed on this other people who were there. And then, and that never got dealt with. And then, you know, I was just talking with some people the other day about how after the sixty-seven war and the occupation really began. Um, if you ask most Israelis who were alive there at the time, who were adults, they'll tell you that nobody thought they were going to continue that occupation. It's a war. We won. We took some land. There'll be negotiations. We'll figure out a way to hand it back. And it was kind of a slow surprise to people that that never happened. Well, and then it just, it became, you know, so it's about survival as a people. It's not about, it's just not about religion. It's just not. I'm sorry.
Uh, i- i- it's good to hear this because, uh, there's a lot, I think you're right. There's so many facts. There's so many stories. There's so many layers. And what is it that you hear through very different media streams? Feeds back to the, the young people's understanding of what is a conflict, where does it originate, all that kind of stuff.
Right. And there are people who will use religion to justify what they're doing to try to resolve the political situation. But, but it's not a religious, there's, there's not a religious conflict.
Right, cool. And so we're not going to stay there obviously because there's, there's actually, there's so much we could unpack on that one. Uh, and then also the next question is, Shonika, you wanted to, to put something more into that one?
I just want a, a quick comment on Sue Yen's point. I think, uh, such an important point about the evolving nature of, of, uh, the internet, the social media, um, all the different platforms that people of my age and possibly Stephen's age, sorry, Stephen, uh, but, uh, just, we, we're left behind. You know, you, it's just Instagram, yeah, I know about it, TikTok, no, I don't know what you're talking about. It's kind of, uh, and, uh, young people are on it, they're in, they're into it. So the amount of information involved, so Sue Yen, I mean, I think you made a, a really, really important point. Um, that, that, uh, that none of us have, have really been able to, to deal with because a lot of the religious leaders are of a different generation and they're just not able to keep up. So that's part of it. Another reason why we need young people involved. And then, uh, Nazat, I think you've made a very, very important point about interpretation of scripture and the issues involved with it. And if we look at it historically where, uh, the Islamic world, uh, especially through Moorish Spain, was leading the Christian world in its philosophical thinking because it had preserved the Greek philosophical thought. You have Abi Senna and different people who are, are speculating with this. And then Thomas Aquinas and the Catholic Church had to write his huge, big voluminous text, really responding to Islamic understanding of philosophy. But it was so easy for people to dumb all that down by saying, well, the book says this, so we don't have to think like that. And that, that's, that's a real problem. Um, is there intellectual integrity? Is, where's, where does personal understanding and conscience come in? Where, so are there issues of interpretation of text where the interpretation is uh, up to every single individual to interpret it for themselves? Or do you have to listen to a particular faith leader, be it an Imam, a guru, a Brahmin, a priest or whatever? And, and begin, open up a discussion about this. Because if it is a guru, a teacher, an institution, which one, which one has a monopoly on the truth? Because maybe it's that only God has a monopoly on the truth and the rest of us are just talking through our head. You know, so, so I, 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 th- these are big issues. We won't, we won't solve them now, but.
Uh, and then, um, a- as usually what happens with these things, we tend to, it gets to heat up towards the end. So, um, I've got two more questions, one from Imam Ibra and Imam Adam. So I'll go to Ibra first, please. Is he here? There he is. If you just unmute and then go for it.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, this only comment for the, you know, uh, what, uh, what mention. Because, uh, as of moment, uh, the religious leader must stand together. Uh, not a competing throat, uh, but a complimentary, uh, light guiding, you know, community towards peace and understanding. Uh, this is very important, you know, to promote peace. And, you know, uh, uh, everybody get together on the religion. Uh, all of religion is, uh, built only to, uh, you know, uh, to guiding the, uh, the people and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And then over to Imam Adam.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to, uh, reiterate the importance of the online world and, uh, social media, which has been mentioned a few times. So, so the title of this session is pushing back against the rising tide of bigotry and prejudice. The vast majority of the bigotry and the prejudice we're talking about, not exclusively, but most of it is online. Many people across the world are feeling like their lives are not complete. They're feeling threatened by other groups of people. And what I tell people who complain to me about the state of the country, the way the world is going to pop, I tell them, take your mobile phone, put it in your pocket and then the world magically becomes a better place. And the reason for that is this. Now, this brings up two issues. The first issue is engagement, like has been recognized from religious leaders and from, uh, representatives of religion. Uh, are we slow in taking it up? Personally, I don't think I'm too old. It's a good enough excuse. I think, okay, if you're, if you, if you just don't get technology, understand its importance and empower younger people within your community to be engaged in that. This is something I've taken seriously for many years, uh, to the point where, uh, you know, even my Instagram posts will differ from my Facebook posts. I'm a little bit more serious on Facebook by virtue of the audience who are on there, usually older people, whereas it's usually the youngsters on, on Instagram. So on Instagram, I'll, I'll talk about sports and I'll talk about, uh, music and I'll talk about cinema and nice food and traveling, uh, a lot more. People really need to get with the times. The other challenge, and this is arguably the bigger challenge, is who these social media companies are run by and the profit involved. Ultimately, their businesses, like has been recognized, hate brings in money for these businesses. Anger brings in money for these businesses. Division brings in money for these businesses. And here in the UK, in the last two weeks, a report has been published which shows that one particular, uh, social media platform, the algorithms are biased towards far-right narratives. So this is a huge challenge which we have right now and we do need to come together to, uh, to face it and take it on.
All right. So, you know, you've all done amazingly well. We've got one minute to go. So we've done very, very well. Um, and, and I, we're quickly in closing. Um, just, just to answer that question before about the, the public voice. One thing that happened in New Zealand after the mosque, uh, shootings was that the government tried to, well, didn't try, it did, it pulled together faith leaders from all over the country in about three or four different hubs. And, uh, it was really, really actually a great time of, of interaction. Uh, however, one of the key things out of it was all of the faith president, Hindu Buddhism, Sikh, um, Christian, um, lo- all of the, the wider spectrum, uh, is Islam, Judaism. All of them agreed, even at the expense of their own teaching, that, oh, hey, in your educational curriculum, just teach the top three religions. Doesn't even matter if, like if, I don't think Hinduism is like a point zero five percent in New Zealand. It's not, it's not big. Uh, but, but, um, they were even saying, just teach the top three. Because what they were trying to point out was to the government that all of our faiths, when taught well, are actually not going to inspire violence. Um, and, and the government, however, couldn't pick up on the fact because New Zealand's a very secular space, which will be different from some of your other countries. But we were talking about secularism before. And for that conversation to start and go well here in New Zealand, the government or whoever's in charge at the time, the government has to accept that secularism is a worldview. And they don't. They kind of see it as a neutral starting point, which it isn't. And so, and so policymakers then in New Zealand, it's a very interesting conversation to have, which will be different in other countries. So that was just to, to help, uh, add to that question. But if I was going to close up in closing with all the stuff that we've heard, um, there's two things probably that, that shine out and that's maybe that, um, that particular love of neighbor or, or, um, stranger or, um, and all the different religions. that particular love of neighbor or, or stranger or, and all the different religions and faiths. How we treat the person we encounter is key. And, and actually doing that in real life can often be very different from how we do it digitally. And so also to have the critical thinking, to be able to sit down with a person who may be different from you and, and explore and engage without actually having to, to form an opinion straight away. And, and that's the other thing, I think in the interfaith space, we also, we used to talk a lot about tolerance and that always used to jar with me because who the heck wants to be tolerated? Like I, I don't understand the use of that language. And I always thought it was better to, to talk about respect. Because a respectful place is a, is a better place to start dialogue. And so if we're talking about the online and everything that we've heard socially, with social media, with digital age and we, and critical thinking and stuff, I think you've all contributed amazingly well to my understanding of, of getting better at it from a ground level, from a community level. But also we need to be able to talk to powers and those powers will be different in your spaces and having good, honest conversations. And I think there is a question still hanging there that we didn't really answer. And that is, how do you get people to sit down with differing viewpoints and talk? And, and I remember a rabbi phrase, and maybe I'll end with this one, and you guys can tell me if it's wrong. I heard a rabbi say once that, you know, we should sit down and we should eat because after we eat, it's going to be a lot harder for me to hate you. And so, so I, I'd say, let's bring on the food. That's my, that's the, that was how I would close this session. So thank you all very much. And I hand it back now to the powers that be. Go well, everybody.
Reverend, and thank you everyone for tuning in to the final session on religions for peace, pushing back against the rising tide of bigotry and prejudice.